Good morning, I would like to call for this meeting to present the best needs of the Alabama Community College System. Uh, this morning, we're very pleased to have participants in the Alabama Certified Workforce and Economic Development Board here. I'd like to thank the members sitting over there. Appreciate your attendance here at our board meeting. Appreciate what you do.
At this time, I'll recognize Dr. Robert Exley, President of Sneed State Community College, to give our invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. First Peter 2:17 says, "Show proper respect to everyone." And I'd like to read this short essay. As with many memorials, the Franklin Delano Roosevelt Memorial in Washington DC came into being after years of debate. Women's groups demanded that Eleanor be given appropriate recognition. Activists for the Disabled ardently believed that FDR should be portrayed in his wheelchair. On and on, the debates raged. Finally, in spite of all the controversy, it was completed. The memorial gives testimony to the fact that President Roosevelt and his wife Eleanor served America during some of its darkest years. It is a fitting design. For as visitors approach it, nothing really stands out. All one sees is a flat granite wall, perhaps twenty feet in height, with a simple quote from FDR, but this is just the beginning. The memorial stretches directly away from the interest and after rounding the wall, visitors move from area to area, every one marked by unique stillness. Each succeeding area is created to set apart from the previous one, making it a tribute in its own right. Visitors find themselves looking at human-sized sculptures of men and women standing in breadlines, reading quotes decrying the savagery of war, staring eye to eye with Eleanor Roosevelt, and eventually looking up and across to see FDR in his wheelchair with his Scottish terrier beside him. The strength of the memorial comes from its ability to draw the visitor into the presence of one man's passionate belief in serving his country. The impact of the memorial is to make each visitor more aware of the awesome responsibility of leadership, not just the leadership of presidents, but leadership of all people. Whenever you have doubts about your purpose, remember the words of Martin Luther King Jr., "Everyone can be great because everyone can serve." Would you pray with me? Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve your people, to serve the people of Alabama, and to serve our country. Father, ask your blessing and your guidance and your wisdom upon our board, on each of the presidents here and these persons present. Father, keep us humble as we carry out our responsibilities. Give us wisdom far beyond that we could normally expect. And God, please bless our country during these tumultuous times. Bring a sense of peace to each of us. In thy name we pray. Amen.
If everyone will please stand with the flag of allegiance. Allegiance, salute, and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, will you please call the board?
Mr. Al Thompson.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Present.
Mr. Chubb Smith.
Present.
Mr. Wade McInally.
Present.
Mr. Jefferson.
Present.
Mr. Jayden Morgan.
Present.
Mr. Jay Ivey.
Mr. Jerry Martin.
Next item four is the approval of the agenda. The board members have been sent the agenda prior to this meeting, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion. Yes. I'd like to recommend that the agenda be amended in today's meeting for the purpose of adding an action item to the personnel. Uh, the action item would be the item which points to President Southern Union College. Mr. Chancellor, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion by Mr. Davis is their second. Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of approving the amended agenda, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? The agenda's approved. Item five is the approval of the minutes of the June 13th, 2018 meeting. Board members have received those minutes in advance of this meeting and have a chance to lift the note. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. A motion by Mr. Fancher is their second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McInally. Any discussion? There being none, will move to vote, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the June 13th, 2018 meeting, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. No one signed up for public comment. Item seven, new business, section seven rather, uh, seven, A1, election officers, chairman first. At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for chairman of the board.
I'd recommend that Al Thompson.
Al Thompson's been nominated.
Second.
Any other nominations for chairman? There being none, will move to vote, all those in favor of approving Al Thompson as chairman, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Next, item seven, A2, vice chairman. Nominations for vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, nomination for Mr. Justin Milton Davis.
Milton Davis nominated for vice chairman.
Sir.
Any other nominations? There being none, will move to vote, all those in favor of Milton Davis as vice chairman of the board trustees, signified by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Chairman and vice chairman, Al Thompson and Milton Davis. Section, section eight, academic and student affairs, adult education, facilities, fiscal information technology and workforce development. Item eight, A1, is the sale of property at Calhoun Community College. This was on the previous work sessions, had extensive discussion by the board. At this time, I will entertain a motion, uh, on the sale of real property for Calhoun Community College. Second, motion by Ms. Brown, second by Mr. Woods. There being none, will move to vote, all those in favor of approving the sale of property by Calhoun Community College, please raise your hand. We have one abstention, Mr. McInally. Motion carries. Item eight, A2, Alabama Community College salary schedules. Once again, this was on a previous work session. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on this item. A motion by Ms. Brown is their second. Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the salary schedules for 2018, 2019 for the Alabama Community Colleges? There being none, will move to vote, all those in favor, signified by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, A1, Mr. Ferment, title of emeritus, the dean Lynn Bell at George C. Wallace State Community College Dethan. At this time, I will recognize Dr. Linda Young.
Good morning. Chairman Thompson, members of the board, Chancellor Baker. I think I've been at this microphone too many times lately with departure of Wallace Community College personnel. Today, we're recognizing a long-time employee, Lynn Bell, our dean of business affairs, as he enters retirement. And, um, you have a resolution in front of you that certainly outlines his very successful career, but if you might allow me, I'd like to read the resolution. Whereas Mr. H. Lynn Bell is a longtime resident of the Wiregrass, graduated from Auburn University in 1976 with a bachelor of science degree in business administration, and graduated from Troy State University Dethan in 1990 with a master of science degree in business administration. And whereas Mr. H. Lynn Bell has been the purchasing agent for Dorsey Travers from September 1977 to October 1980, has been the business manager for Southeast Alabama Skills Center from November 1980 to March 1984, and has been comptroller, custodian of funds for Dethan City Schools from April 1984 to September 1991, has been the chief officer of finance and assistant to the superintendent of Montgomery County Schools from October 1991 to March 1996, and whereas Mr. H. Lynn Bell has served as the dean of business affairs with Wallace Community College Dethan since April 1996, having served as the chief financial officer of the multi-campus community college with primary areas of responsibility in finance, accounting, budgeting, purchasing, financial reporting, risk management, fixed asset accounting, management information systems, telecommunications, general business functions of the institution, maintenance, construction, management, custodial service, food service, vending service, campus bookstores, printing, transportation, and shipping and receiving. And whereas Mr. Bell has been involved in a number of professional organizations and activities throughout his career, including member and former president of Alabama Community College System Financial Management Systems Association, attended annual conferences with the American Association of Community Colleges, and Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, has provided exceptional leadership and vision to these organizations. And whereas Mr. Bell has demonstrated outstanding leadership and integrity throughout his career in the business affairs division, through streamlined business operations and services, including a comprehensive overall of all business office functions resulting in 24/7/365 access to information, has overseen the renovation and construction of all college building projects, including the recent completion of the almost 100,000 square foot, $19 million health science building. And whereas Mr. Bell has excelled in promoting leadership throughout the college by supporting the development of the Wallace Community College Dethan Instructional Leadership Challenge and the I Can Initiative, has served as the administrative liaison for multiple campus committees, initiated the first behavioral intervention team in the Alabama Community College System. And whereas Mr. Bell's commitment to excellence has been recognized by the Alabama Department of Public Examiners with no audit findings for the past 16 years. A chancellor's award nominee for Wallace Community College Dethan, alumnus of Leadership Dethan, the Business Officers Association Financial Manager of the Year. And whereas Mr. Bell has demonstrated tireless commitment to Wallace Community College Dethan and to its students, faculty, and staff, lived daily his commitment to excellence throughout the college, sought facts and data to support fair and just decisions with regard to student program or employee issues, demonstrated exceptional contributions to the college's foundations through financial gifts, supported the achievement of national recognition by the American Association of Community Colleges for student success and recognition by the Community College Times as one of the fastest-growing community colleges in Alabama. And whereas Mr. Bell has been a distinguished community leader, as demonstrated by his contributions to organizations, including the Lions Club and Rotary, and as an active member in his church. And whereas Mr. Bell has led by example, was a results-oriented, data-driven servant leader, and is highly respected and regarded by his colleagues. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees hereby recognizes and honors Mr. H. Lynn Bell for the leadership and exceptional work he has provided to Wallace Community College Dethan, the Alabama Community College System, and students of our colleges by authorizing Wallace Community College Dethan to confirm him the title of business affairs, dean of business affairs emeritus. I'd like Lynn to come up.
Let me say this, I knew nothing about this until this morning. And, and I, I don't have anything prepared, but I do want to tell you a few things that's on my heart. First of all, um, my career started because of a community college. I would not have been able to go to college if, uh, if there hadn't been for the community college system. I know what, uh, the value of community college is. It sounds like I've had a long distinguished career, but it's a long, long delay. Several years ago, when I was, uh, working with skills centers, started out the old CICA program, uh, meeting with a group of people one day, and somebody asked me, "Where do you want to be when you grow up? What do you want to do at the end of your career?" And I told him without thinking, I said, "I think I'd like to be the business manager of Wallace Community College." Years later, I had the opportunity, when a job came open, which I'm the third business manager that college has ever had. But I had a chance to apply for the job, and I sought the advice of someone who had locked me, and that was Mr. Baker. And I presented to him that I'm considering leaving K-12 to go to community college and apply for a job, and asked his opinion. His first question was, "Which one?" And I told him, and he said, "I don't think you can go on." And he was right. I've been well, uh, served by that college and that community, and it's been an honor to work in this system. I want to tell you that, uh, change takes courage, and I know that this system is evoking change in a way that has not happened before, and I commend you for that, because we will only get better. And I thank you for this opportunity. I thank you for allowing me to serve. I thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Dean. Bill, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on the resolution. Motion by Mr. Davis is their second. Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of approving the title of emeritus, the dean, H. Lynn Bell, please raise your hand. Approve you now. Congratulations again, Dean Bell. And thank you so much for those wonderful words that you shared with us. Item nine, A2, uh, is establishment of a parking fee at Mary Military Institute. That, once again, this was on a work session, has been, uh, well explained to the board. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. A motion by Ms. Hoy, and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? There being none, will move to vote, all those in favor of establishment of parking fee at Mary Military Institute, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, A3, compensation of college presidents, policy 203.05 for the Alabama Community College System. Once again, this has been thoroughly discussed in work session. Board has been well informed on this. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. McInally is their second. Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just say thank you to the staff and those involved in preparing this work, this policy, and a lot of effort, an awful lot of research that went into it. Something that I think we needed to address for quite some time, and we're at this point.
Thank you, Mr. McInally, and thank you also for your leadership in that finance committee and, um, your working with the staff on this. Any other comments, discussion? There being none, will move to vote, all those in favor of approving policy 203.05, compensation of college presidents, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, A4, compensation of Alabama Community College Personnel Policy 606.01. Uh, once again, this has been on a prior work session, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Ms. Brown is their second. Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any comments? There being none, will move to vote, all those in favor of approving policy 606.01, compensation of Alabama Community College System personnel, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, A5, policy 901.01, approval, approval of college mission statement for the Alabama Community College System. Is there a motion? A motion by Mr. Davis is second. Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Any comments? There being none, will move to vote. All those in favor of policy 901.01, approval of college mission statement for Alabama Community College System, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, A6, sale of FCC radio license and real property at Gadsden State Community Once again, this has been on previous work session, fully discussed with the board. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Woods is their second. Second by Ms. Hoy. There being none, will move to vote on this item, the sale of FCC radio license and real property by Gadsden State Community College. All those who have signed up by raising their hand, any in favor of? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Section 10, personnel. Of personnel, I'll try to never announce who's been appointed this. But I do want to mention, and this will be the last word we need for this rock, which means he's a real asset to the system. He, uh, brought to the table an awful lot of experience, and I just want the board to know that an expression of the vision that we have, wishing the best, we're fulfilling. And since you mentioned that, Chancellor, I'm sure that the entire board feels the same way, and, uh, Russ, you will be best. I personally enjoyed working with you, have appreciated your insight, your intellect, your good judgment. Wish you very best.
Thank you.
Please rise. Let's give, let's give Russ a. But now, let's talk about adding other personnel to the system. First, I would like to make a recommendation on president of Southern Union Community College. But I'd like to note that it's probably been at least fifteen, about sixteen years since Southern Union has had a settled president situation. Been over ten since they actually had one. Prior to this, they're not even getting, who was? But, uh, I'm excited about where we're headed. I'm excited about the opportunities to make Southern Union Community College and all of its locations be as great as they can. In the whole process of talking about this, we have had various committees, and one of the individuals who chaired the committee for that whole process is with us today and is asked to, so with that, I'd like to call and carry Cox, if you will.
Thank you, Chancellor. Um, as the Chancellor said, there were, there were many committees put together, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to the board today. Uh, the first, we had to, had to nail down the strategic planning committee. We didn't want to bring in a new president. And every time I say "we" didn't want to, basically what I'm saying is, it was the Chancellor's office's idea. Uh, didn't want to bring in a new, uh, president and then have to, uh, you know, fix the strategic plan. So, we had a strategic planning committee, uh, that was comprised of, uh, people from the Valley Campus, from the Wabbe Campus, uh, government officials from the various cities that, uh, Southern Union serves, and industry. So we had the industry, education, and government, and we had three town hall meetings, and we had a lot of work sessions, and we had a lot of people that put some time into this strategic plan, got that nailed down, and that rolled right into a presidential search committee. And again, we had, uh, we had industry, we had the mayors from the various cities, uh, we had, um, uh, people, you know, so we had government, we had industry, and then we had the education side, uh, working this together. At this time, all of this was transparent, and, uh, and then we came to, uh, the conclusion of the person we did, and I guess, I don't need to say a name, but it's not, but, uh, since you hadn't said it yet, but we are tickled to death with, uh, with the new president that's going to be announced at Southern Union. Uh, I've known him for years, anytime we had an initiative we were working on, uh, he was right there, he was one of the ones at the table, uh, very responsible for the injection molding curriculum that's now at Southern Union, uh, very instrumental in that. Chancellor, we asked in those meetings for somebody with technical expertise, and now you gave that to us, and it's our job to, uh, to back him up and, uh, to, to offer our support. In support today, we've got some, our industry's from Auburn and Opelika, uh, we've got Faurevik here, uh, and I will, I will talk about his company, we've got Rappa, uh, German company, we've got Briggs and Stratton, and we've got Donaldson here, and these guys are the, basically, they're the senior HR people, uh, the go-getters in the area, who know how to get things done, and we pledge our support. But again, we're, we applaud the Chancellor's office, uh, we asked for something, and they gave it to us, and, uh, we're just thankful for that, that you've got our support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I would like to recommend Todd M. Shackett to be the incoming president, take it, office for him, as the new president that Sheldon, uh, of Southern Union. With that, I, I'm asking Sheldon, she will kind of give you a little background, because I've already seen this before.
Good morning, Chairman and board. Todd M. Shackett has thirty years of leadership experience, ranging in scope from engineering to finance to human resources, logistics, and project management. For the past eight years, he's resided in Auburn, Alabama, where he serves as the director of operational excellence for Baxter International. Mr. Shackett is very familiar with the ever-evolving workforce needs of business and industry. He has consistently worked to develop partnerships with community colleges to help provide skills training and education to students. Passionate about the success of today's youth, Mr. Shackett has promoted and utilized apprenticeship programs to expand the talent pipeline, both previously in his role at Beckton Dickinson in North Carolina, and most recently during his tenure at Baxter International, where Southern Union students have directly benefited. Mr. Shackett is recognized as a leader in the community, and serves as an executive board member of the Opelika Chamber of Commerce. He also serves as a member of the Industrial Advisory Board at Southern Union, and chair of the Auburn University Graduate School Advisory Board. of the Auburn University Graduate School Advisory Board. Mr. Shackett has a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering from GMI Engineering and Management Institute, a Master of Science in Mechanical Engineering, and a Master of Science in Operations Management from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, and a Certificate in Executive Management from Stanford University. Mr. Shackett stands ready to move Southern Union forward by forging new partnerships and strengthening current ones. He is committed to the entire Southern Union service area. Mr. Shackett brings to the table a wealth of business and leadership experience, a demonstrated commitment to helping students succeed, and ties to the local community. All attributes rendering him the best candidate to serve as the next president of Southern Union.
Board, we have, of course, a recommendation from Chancellor Baker, recommend Todd Shackett as the new president for Southern Union State Community College. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I proudly make a motion to accept the Chancellor's recommendation to appoint Mr. Todd Shackett as president.
We have a motion for trustee Susan Foley is our second. Second, for trustee Davis. Any discussion?
I'd like to just say how proud we are to have Mr. Shackett president by now. I was wishing to help just say in the process, I know that we confidently have a wonderful president for Southern Union, and we know as a board that Southern Union Community College is a very proud college, steeped in history, and I'm sure that you will be loved with open arms, not only in the Auburn Opelika area, but also the Wobbe Campus as well.
Ms. Foley, any other discussion or comments from the board? There being none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the Chancellor's recommendation, Todd Shackett is the new permanent president for Southern Union State Community College, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations, President Shackett.
Todd, would you like to go to the left? One is going, I mentioned Auburn was involved, University was involved in all this. I think they actually have representatives here today.
We do. We're pleased to have support and participation by CJ Hensley and Christian B. Proffitt at Auburn University. If I've forgotten anybody else? Is that everybody?
Pleased for you to be here. Well, first of all, I'll say thank you to the Chancellor and the members of the board. I'm very honored, first of all, and secondly, very excited. I think when you heard Dean Bell give his statements, that's the sentiment that I really look for, right? So when I told the employees at Baxter that I was leaving, they were surprised, first of all. When I told them why, they were very happy for me. They've known for many years, this is a bit of a passion for me. It's a purpose-driven movement for me. Since I've been here in Alabama almost nine years, I've been affiliated somewhat with the campus in Opelika for something. Over that time, I've seen the huge potential that the school has. We've been very successful in bringing students through our programs, and as you know, there's a growing need for the types of students that come out of Southern Union. As an employer in industry, and I think the folks here in the second row can tell you, it's hard to find really talented people to do the work that's needed to be competitive these days, and Southern Union produces that. So what I'm looking forward to very much and very excited about is the huge potential we have in partnering with the K-12 school systems, existing industry, and also transitioning military bodies, and finding a pipeline of talent for the communities that we serve. So again, thank you, everybody, for your support. I'm really looking forward to serving as a leader. The key word there is "serve." I'm very excited about it and can't wait to get started, so thank you.
Should we have some other review of colleagues? I'm asking she'll introduce those.
Dr. Edith Smith. Dr. Edith Smith joined the system office on June 18th as the Executive Director of Academic and Student Affairs. With more than thirty-five years of experience in higher education, Dr. Smith previously served in a variety of roles at Andrews College in Georgia, roles which included interim academic dean, SAC COC liaison, director of institutional research and effectiveness, and athletic director. Prior to her service at Andrews College, Dr. Smith served as interim dean of the College of Health and Human Services and associate dean of the Graduate School at Troy University. Prior to her administrative service at Troy, she served as a full professor in the Department of Kinesiology and Health Promotion and director of the Physiology Laboratory. In addition to her service at Troy University, Dr. Smith also spent nine years in the classroom at Wallace State Community College in Dothen, Wallace Community College in Dothen. Dr. Smith earned a Bachelor of Science in Biology and Physical Education, I'm sorry, Bachelor of Science in Biology and Physical Education from Troy State University, a Master of Education in Health, Physical Education in Recreation, and a PhD in Interdepartmental Physiology from Auburn University. Dr. Smith, please stand. Our next new hire is Ms. Karen Becker. Ms. Becker joined the system office on July 2nd as the Chief Deputy Information Officer. Ms. Becker brings to the ACCS over twenty-four years of experience in higher education. Prior to joining the ACCS, Ms. Becker most recently served as the Associate Chief Information Officer for the University of Georgia. She also served as the University Information System Director for Auburn University. Well-versed in ERP implementations, during her tenure at Sun Guard Higher Education, Ms. Becker assisted several higher education institutions with ERP implementation. Ms. Becker also served as the Assistant Director of Admissions for North Georgia College and State University, and as an admissions counselor and registrar of staff for DeKalb County, DeKalb Community College. Ms. Becker has a Bachelor of Science in Education from Georgia Southern University, and a Master of Science in Human Resources Development and Policy Studies from Georgia State University. Ms. Becker, please stand. Dr. Chris Cox. Dr. Cox joined the system office on July 2nd as the State Director of Strategic Projects in the Workforce Development Division. Dr. Cox will serve as the primary contact person responsible for building and maintaining partnerships between the ACCS and K-12 schools throughout the state. He will also oversee the Career Coaches Program. Dr. Cox has over twenty-three years of experience in education. He most recently served as Assistant Superintendent for the Oxford City Board of Education. Prior to his service with the Oxford City Board, he served as principal for Oxford High School, principal at Pine Dell Elementary School in Enterprise, and assistant principal at Geneva High School. Dr. Cox also spent time in the classroom at Dale County High School in Midland City, Alabama. Dr. Cox has a Bachelor of Science in Social Science from Troy State University, a Master of Science in Educational Administration from Alabama State University, and an educational specialist degree and a Doctor of Philosophy in Educational Administration from Auburn University. Dr. Cox, please stand.
Mr. Chairman, I can't resist this. We are going to be looking at what career coaches do.
Mr. Joe Williams. Joe Williams joined the system office on July 2nd as the Regional External Affairs and Congressional Liaison in the External Affairs Division. With twenty-one years of congressional and political experience in Alabama, Mr. Williams will be responsible for creating and maintaining relationships with business and industry partners, community leaders, elected officials, higher education, and K-12 officials. He will also serve as a primary link to the United States Congress, working directly with the Alabama Congressional delegation. Prior to joining the ACCS, Mr. Williams served as the District Director for Congressman Martha Rogan. He also worked as a field director for Bradley Burns Campaign for Governor, and spent twelve years as a field director for Congressman Terry Everett. Mr. Williams has a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from Auburn University, a Master of Public Administration from the University of Alabama at Birmingham, and a Juris Doctorate from the Cumberland School of Law at Stanford University. Mr. Williams? And lastly, our newest employee, Mr. William Merrill, joined the system office this week on Monday, July 9th, as the Associate Director of Financial Services Special Projects. A 2013 Chancellor's Award recipient for Administrator of the Year, Mr. Merrill has twenty-two years of accounting experience, and most recently served as comptroller and operations accountant at Trenum State Community College. Prior to joining Trenum, Mr. Merrill spent over thirteen years in the public and private sector. Mr. Merrill is a certified public accountant, has a Bachelor of Science in Commerce and Business Administration from the University of Alabama, and a Master of Business Administration from Auburn University, Montgomery. Mr. Merrill?
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. We are striving every day to build a strong cadre of people in this office to assist our students' success. And I do think it's important, and I take a lot of pride in all of this, but with what we are undertaking today with the transition of new ERP system, it is absolutely necessary that we have the skill sets here to provide the leadership in that transition. And I think we've been very fortunate to have a team leader and assistant at the level that they are to work with our people throughout the system in training and working together to make that transition as difficult as it's going to be, but make it as easy as we possibly can for all of us. And as we reach a point of completion of that, it's going to be exciting to have available the type of data that we need to do a good job in that. So as we move forward, I feel comfortable that we have a staff that can provide the leadership.
New Chancellor for the board?
Yes, Susan, can you give an update a little bit, because I want to make something very clear, that the action of the board and moving forward on all personnel, so on compensation side?
Yes, sir. Good morning. So first of all, briefly, we really appreciate the board's approval of new Policy 203.05 and the approach to presidential compensation. There's still a whole lot of work to be done with respect to compensation. If you think of presidential compensation as phase one, then we're now moving into phase two, which is just as important, and that is a compensation study that focuses on our college employees. That includes faculty, staff, and administrators. It's a pretty big endeavor. We've searched our archives and note that there hasn't been a serious or meaningful review of compensation and salary schedules in more than twenty-five years. So now is the time to address this matter. Chancellor Baker has appointed Doctors David Campbell and James Mitchell to co-chair this effort, and they are already at work. A steering committee is in the process of being formed, it includes presidents, and it will include a cross-section of employees from the system. Let me underscore that. It will include a cross-section of employees from the system. They will be involved every step of the way, and certainly, we will be soliciting their input. To be done correctly, this is going to take some time, and my guess is the steering committee will need to utilize subcommittees and possibly consultants who are experts in this field. In the coming weeks, you can expect to hear from the co-chairs regarding the committees that have been formed. They'll provide more information to you as well as timelines. Thank you.
About where you are. In a process of reviewing schools, spending a day at each school, with advanced planning process, we've been evaluating schools under policy, just forward created a recommendation of immediate presidents as much as a year ago. In that process, we were reviewing Wallace College and so on, and I saw something that I wanted you to see. So Susan, kind of put that, introduce where we are.
Okay, so we saw something that you want to see. And Wallace Selma, like many of our institutions, is doing excellent work. We were particularly impressed by the wraparound services that they offer to their students. So what I'd like to do now is introduce Dr. Mitchell, President of Wallace State Community College Selma, and I believe he has some staff here as well as a student, and they'd like to offer a presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Price. Good morning. To Chairman Thompson, members of the board, Chancellor Baker, I'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to make this brief presentation to you this morning, and want you to know that we will continue to do all that we can to ensure student success. I think it's obvious that over the past few years, we've had to deal with declining enrollment, low retention rates, all other problems that students face when they enter our community colleges as well as higher education in general. That has caused us to really focus on data, and we've become more data-driven, and there's nothing wrong with that, that's important. That's a part of the process, however. I think it's important, as we look at data, for example, we, yes, we have to offer a placement exam that tells us where to place students or where they go into a particular course or where they don't go. But that doesn't address the whole student need, and that's a part of the problem that I think we have to address in terms of looking at the whole student. Yes, it's important for the placement to determine what courses they go in, are they registered, and do they receive tutorial assistance. There's another side of it that I think is very important, and I feel that we have to pay a great deal of attention to that. We do hit and miss at times, and I'm speaking about Wallace Community College. I'm not speaking about my colleagues and what they do. But I think we've had to place an emphasis on what we consider a lot of socio-economic factors that impact students and their success. For an example, our students come to us oftentimes, not academically prepared, but guess what? Because of open enrollment, and that's a good thing, because I don't, I think that's where we show how good we are. We take a student where they are and get them to where they need to be once they exit, and that's our job. They come to us with that deficiency, so we have to address that. We also have students who come to us with many other factors, such as their lights were turned off before they came to class this morning, their daycare, they weren't able to afford it to pay for it, so they're trying to find daycare for their children so that they can go to class. Their car broke down. You know, you could just go down the list, and I think there are many factors, and you know, we can say that that's oftentimes, or maybe poor planning, but I say not oftentimes. It's our student, it's who they are, it's what they have, what they bring to the table. And that's where I think it's important, when we come in, that we begin to say, "Let's look at what we can do to address those deficiencies." And I think I'm reminded more about, when I think about the obstacles and barriers that they face, I'm reminded of a quote by George Washington Carver, and I quote, "Measure me not by the heights I've climbed, but from the depths I've come." Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to present Dr. Donita Griffin. Dr. Griffin will give you a brief presentation on some of that data, as well as some other wraparound services that we have. Dr. Griffin is my executive assistant and dean of students. Dr. Griffin, thank you, board.
Right now is your time to thr- right now is your time to thrive, to take your life to the next level with high- level with high wage, high demand, career training at Wallace Community College in Selma. With accredited programs and small classes taught by teachers with real-world experience, you'll get the attention you need to succeed. Our graduates stand ahead of the line with additional industry certifications. We offer training in health sciences, computer science, welding, drafting and design, electrical technology, industrial maintenance, masonry and building trades, and cosmetic-
And again, to the chancellor and Chairman Thompson and board members. We believe that in Wallace Selma that we are truly doing God's work, and we believe that we are serving the least of these. And so I've set my timer to fifteen minutes, and I'm going to be done in that time, so I'm going to be talking really fast. And Chancellor, you can time in at any time because I know this, that you're passionate about this. Wallace Community College service area, as you can see, we're in the heart of the Black Belt. We're located directly in Selma, and we're the tenth poorest city in the United States. And so with that, we have many challenges. So some of the opportunities that we have at the local level, I didn't name out all of our counties, but as you can see, some of the population and the poverty that we have in our areas. The median income, the percentage of high school graduates above twenty-five percent, which is a very high number, and I'll go into detail a little bit about that. Also, the percentage of graduates that are below twenty-five is a very low number in our area. So this is just not at Wallace Community College at the local level, but it's also at the state level. We have four point eight seven million people that live in the state of Alabama. High school graduates at an all-time high, eighty-three point seven, which is a wonderful thing. But only twenty-three percent of residents in the state of Alabama hold a four-year degree, and only twenty-one percent hold a two-year degree. So Alabama is the sixth poorest state in the United States, and ninety-two percent of that population falls below the poverty line. And the poverty line is twenty-four thousand three hundred, and as Dr. Mitchell has mentioned, that comes with many challenges. Because many of us could not even afford to live, family are poor, or twenty-four thousand dollars. I'm struggling with five. So here are some of the states in Alabama. We only have about seven actually that are under twelve percent in poverty. The majority of the states, of the cities in Alabama are above the poverty line, and as you can see in our Black Belt area, it is really in poverty. So what are some of the issues that we have to deal with when we're chasing, when we're challenged with some of these opportunities? And we call them opportunities and not problems. So the challenges of first-generation college students, they lack the college knowledge. They don't even understand the experience. Many of these students come to us, and they don't know the difference between have you applied for college or are you registered? Have you completed your financial aid information? They lack the requisite skills needed to be successful. They lack the finances. They don't even understand. You know, we've of course heard the rumor that most of them come from Pell Grant and they're gone. Well, we've looked at that data, and that's not true. Most of them don't even understand that Pell Grant is free. They lack role models. Many of them don't have the opportunity in their communities where they live next door to Dr. Soakso or they live across the street from this instructor or they live down the street from this business owner. Many of them that live in their communities are living in the same situation, so they lack role models. They lack exposure to career paths. And so we know as we are older, most teachers' children become teachers, preachers' children become preachers', and lawyers' children become lawyers'. But what if you come up in a family and you don't have that? So most of those students, when they come to us and we ask them questions, what are you majoring in? They have no idea about the career path they want to take. And so many of them are limited to non-existent external support from their family or friends, and not because their family doesn't want to help them, but because they don't know how to navigate the system. They don't know what to tell them to do. And so they lack the confidence in their ability to be academically competitive. They're at a higher risk of not completing college, and they're at an even higher risk of not attending. So what we said at Wallace Community College, we're not competing with other colleges or four-year colleges. We're competing with those students that are not going anywhere. So here's some data. Overall, our service overall graduation rate, we have about eighty-eight percent of students in our service areas that are graduating. But fifty-five percent of those students are going nowhere. In the state of Alabama, there's an eighty-nine percent graduation rate. Thirty-six percent of those students are not going to two-year, four-year, or to the military. That's seventeen thousand four hundred and thirteen students that are not going anywhere after high school. So opportunities at the national level. Sixty-two percent of students in the United States enter college directly from high school, but fewer than fifty-three percent attend two-year colleges who return for the sophomore year. And of those who attend two-year colleges, less than twenty-nine percent will graduate after three years. So therefore, as you see, we have a problem, not just at the local level, not just at the state level, but at the national level as well. So let's talk a little bit about Wallace Community College. We noticed that our enrollment was declining. And so we started looking at the data. We noticed that our incoming freshman data was around the same. We were bringing in four to six hundred students every semester. So while we have a problem for beating the bush and for getting out of the top of the school, for getting them in. But we noticed our retention rate. We were bringing them in with some of the issues that they had with lacking the requisite skills, coming in, not being prepared for college stuff. We were not able to retain them after the first year. So our retention rate was at twenty-one, twenty-two percent. So although we're beating the bushes to get them in, we're not able to keep them. So we understood that we had to do something different. Well, what is the impact? Many of you look at WSFA or WSAK, and you know some of the problems that we're having in Selma and surrounding area. What is the impact of an uneducated community? High crime rate, high incarceration rate, difficulty attracting high-wage industries to our communities, poor health, increased drug and alcohol abuse. And so these are some of the problems that we were seeing in our area. Well, economic projection research shows that sixty-three, three percent of all jobs in the United States would require some post-secondary training. And ninety percent of new drops in growing industry with high wages would require some post-secondary training. So we knew at that point we had a problem, so we had to stop and say, what are we going to do about it? So we had our IT department create an enrollment dashboard to drill down into that program data to understand some of the barriers. We created a student success center, and instructional design specialists was added, and we improved collaboration with our Domaire program because we were having students that came in on a third-grade level where our instructors didn't know how to bring a student from the third grade to the twelfth grade and to have them ready for college. So we started collaborating with our Domaire department, which is right on our campus, because they know quickly how to move students through that and how to remediate them and to get them ready. We enhanced faculty and staff development because it was important for us at Wallace Community College for everybody to understand the population that we were serving and what we were going to do to get them to the next level. A leadership academy, thanks to the chancellor, created from faculty, and we expanded our dual enrollment program for technical students. But we also understood, we had to understand our learner, we had to identify potential barriers, transformative opportunities, and we had to have a perfect full wraparound support services. And we believe, our core value belief, is that all students can succeed with the right support services. So having a vision and strategy. This was going to be a difficult task, and I read in one of my devotion this morning was to promote the prize and hide the price. It's not only unfair, but it's a strong invitation for people to jump ship in the first boat. And so we knew that this was going to be difficult, but we knew that we had to set realistic but demanding goals. And it was not enough for us to be able to say that we're going to increase our retention rate by five percent. But we had to talk about how we're going to increase our retention rate. We had to be very specific in the things that we were going to do, and everyone on campus had to be involved in this wraparound service. From admissions to financial aid, from admitted, because we understood that students came to the door and I said, not understanding the entire admissions process. And so we had to have people who were compassionate, people who stood in the hallways and said, what can I help you with? What are you looking for? We created a student success center, and we created a one-stop center initially because we understood sending a student over to another building for financial aid or telling them, once you get with that, go to admission. Once you're done with that, go to registration. A student having to go to financial aid and be told, don't forget to get your independent verification form. Make sure you're paying, send back your 2015 tax return, was a lot for students to understand who was coming onto a college campus for the first time. So we had to set realistic but demanding goals. We had to collect data and implement measures. One of the things that we're doing right now, we have a Q and R that's going to be set up in every one of our offices. That students are able to take their phone and go to the Q and R and get three survey questions saying, how are we doing? What did we not do? What information would you like to know? That information goes directly to, you know, students, and information goes directly to the director of mission so that we can begin to make immediate changes. We had to analyze the data, and we had to use results to improve our services. So we have a strategic committee who meets on a regular basis to look at all of our goals and to make recommendations. Those recommendations come from that committee to the president, and it is included in everyone's IMP so that we can make sure that we are using our results to improve. So let's talk a little bit about wraparound service. So we understood that success starts here, and we're grateful that we're going to guide the pathway so that we can be able to show students the end at the beginning. And we think once students see a pathway of where they're going, they'll stay on track to completing college. When we started our student success coaching, which is a little different from career coaching in that they deal with academic and unacademic barriers. And so in our Canvas system, learning management system, we understood that we needed to have someone in the back door. Every student at Wallace Community College looking at grades. And when students' grades fell below a seventy percent or students stopped attending class, their coach would reach out to them. Their coach would go to their classroom. Their coach would find him. And so we saw an increase in retention as we were able to, initially, we were just doing retention coaching with nursing students. And we saw a huge improvement in retention, and we saw a huge improvement in academic support. And so Dr. Mitchell allowed us to increase that to every student that is attending Wallace. For our students online, we do Canvas conferences. We provide face-to-face meetings and training with students. We also include academic monitoring where students are labeled in a priority. So we understood that students who already had these problems with staff, which means that they were not either attending class or not meeting the requirements to be on track to graduate, we started reaching out to those students. So we have a dual enrollment liaison. We understood that bringing students on our campus with a tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade would not work without wraparound service. So we created a dual enrollment liaison many years ago who stands at the front of our campus when the bus pulls on campus to greet those students and to tell them what we expect of them. We expect greatness from you. We have that liaison who's in the back door of every one of those dual enrollment students classes who knows exactly where they are throughout their tenure at Wallace, who not only communicates with their college instructors, but who's communicating with their high school instructor. For me as a parent, I know how to communicate with my instructors. I know how to call them and say, what's going on in the classroom, what to do. But many of our parents don't know the questions to even ask. And so we have a dual enrollment liaison and an instructional design specialist who can meet with the parents and say, these are the expectations. These are, these are some of the things that we need to be looking forward to every student's home. So I'm going to talk a little bit about modeling in two minutes. So in about four or five years ago, we started the Howard Hughes Institute Scholarship Project, which is a grant that we wrote with Tuskegee University. We had twenty-five tenth graders that were all coming from failing schools in our service area, Dallas County Key, and Southside High School. A large percentage tested in developmental education courses, and presumably, most of those students were first-generation college students. So we knew coming in, a lot of those students tested into DAPD courses. Well, we started a boot camp at Wallace Community College that lasted for two weeks that we took those students through intent remediation. After that remediation, we tested them again. All of those students tested out of DAPD course. We integrated tutoring, support, parental involvement support, and student coaching with that liaison. Today, all of these students are on track to graduate from Auburn University, from the University of South Alabama, from Tuskegee University, from Alabama University. So as I said from the beginning, our core value is that we believe with the right wraparound service and with the students that we're serving, not just on a local level, on a state level, but on a national level, that with the right wraparound service, we can be very intentional about the service and allow the students to see the ending at the beginning of where they can go. I mentioned to Chancellor when he was on our campus that it is in all of our best interest that we educate these students so that they can get to where they need to be. Students are going to get what they need, whether they want a TV or whether they want a house or whether they want whatever they feel like they need. We are the ones, not us, then who? We are the ones who will give them the resources to be able to legally get what they need or they'll find it with Wallace giving it to them. And they'll come to our homes to find that. So it is in our best interest that we educate them, that we get above the twenty-nine percent nationwide, that we get above the twenty-three percent statewide, and educate our young people so that they can be productive citizens. Thank you. One of our students is going to come briefly. This is Mary Claire White, high school graduate in two thousand sixteen and a Wallace graduate in two thousand eighteen. And she's going to come and give you just a little bit about her story.
Good morning. My name is Mary Claire White, and two years ago, I graduated the very bottom of my high school graduating class. And I didn't even even look at my final GPA, but it was probably a two-point-seven. I wasn't happy in the environment I was in, and I wasn't really involved at all. My dad told me that I was going to Wallace Community College Selma. I really didn't have a choice. He told me, you'll thank me for this later, and he was right. When I first got to Wallace, something inside me clicked. I wanted to try. I wanted to be involved, and I was actually happy in the environment that I was in. Honestly, I did not feel prepared for college, and I went to a college preparatory private school. I have talked to friends that live in the Dallas County area that went to public school. They feel the same way. But with the support services at Wallace, they helped me succeed in my classes. I graduated two months ago today with associates in science and associates in arts with a three-point-six-seven GPA. I served as the chapter president of the Alpha Beta Tau Chapter of Phi Beta Kappa International Art Society. I was named a distinguished officer for the Alabama region, and I was named to the All Alabama Academic Team for two thousand eighteen. I plan to attend the University of Montevallo this fall, and I have a Phi Beta Kappa scholarship, and I also have a community college presidential scholarship. And I plan to study communications studies with a double minor in public relations and general business. I also believe with, with students that are not at the top of their classes, usually people will just write them off or say they're not going to succeed in college. But I think with a little push, they can actually become honor students, and I think I'm a good example of that. And I also believe it's not how you started, but it's how you finish.
Thank you, James, and their staff, and your students. I still, I still remember that day after they got thrown the presentation. I said, oh, you kind of overreacted. Uh, Jeff, if you will, I know Chairman interviews this group over here, but kind of tell us the whole story.
Okay, I'll keep it brief. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Chancellor Baker. Thank you for recognizing our first cohort here for our new program that we're doing. It's the first of its type in the state of Alabama. We're very, very proud to offer this as many other first things through. And this is on our strategic board that we, our strategic plan that we laid out for you several months ago as well, so. And I'm going to have them stand up in just a few minutes so you can really take a good look at them because these are experts in their field right now. We're taking them through about a year, and I don't think they have their homework assignment until after this, right, Barry? So they may not be really smiling after they get that, but, because it's a pretty rigorous course. And we're going to take them through about a year to certify them in workforce and economic development, so. And I actually heard some things from last night that some, some of the people said to me and Chancellor Baker that they'd already learned a lot, and they felt like that they may know more about economic development, some of their, some of their economic developers in our community right now. So, so that's a good, that's a good result, so. But what this is, is the Alabama Certified Workforce Development Program. And it's the beginning of this program. We're hopefully going to roll this out for all of our people across the state. We have several presidents in this particular cohort as well. We have a lot of interest from our other presidents of our schools for this cohort. And they're going to become the experts in the area and their regions and the prospects. When prospects come to town, come to the cities, they're going to be coming to these schools, and these people are going to be well-prepared to show them about all the great things about Alabama, their colleges, and then take them out into some of their labs to show them their future workforce. We're very, very proud of these people. And I also have to give a call out for Barry May, Gary Weaver, Clyde. Putting together the program so quickly. We've been trying to put together this program and do many, many other things. And we're just really happy to recognize them. So if you don't mind, everyone in the class, please take a quick stand. Let's give them a round of applause.
Anything else from the board? Thank you, Chancellor. This has been a full schedule, a longer board meeting than we normally have. We appreciate everybody's patience because it's all been quite substantive. We have some important things presented to us, the student success stories. It's probably been one of the highlights, but especially the approval of President Shackleton, who's the new president of Southern Union Community College. I want to express the board's appreciation for the support from that region, the attendance of Mayor Gary Fuller, the city of Opelika, Mr. Enzi with Auburn University. We appreciate y'all's support, encouragement, and your leadership in so many areas in education. Mayor Riley of Valley, thank you for being here as well, Mayor. Forgive me for, for that oversight. And if I fail to recognize any other distinguished guests, just, I just ask your forgiveness for that. We thank everyone for your attendance here, for your interest in what we are doing for this system. The work is mainly done by our presidents, the chancellor's staff, and the chancellor. We just try to be encouragers and help facilitate that, and it's an honor for all of us serving this board. It's just, just been a great change, and we look forward to making progress in the future. We're going to have a, fill in our work session, but we'll have about a three-minute break. Board members, attention please, stick close, but anyone that needs to go ahead and leave, you can, once we dismiss from the regular board. We'll reconvene for the work sessions, I say, in about three, two or three minutes. And then our next board meeting will be August eighth at ten AM in this building. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. The motions are second. All those in favor say aye.